Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order if we will all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you please call the roll?
Allenson.
Here.
Armady.
Here.
Ishbine. Laffin.
Here.
Regan.
Here.
Reynolds.
Here.
Tada.
Here.
Testa. Marone.
Here.
All right. So the only item on tonight's agenda is discussion of possible action on amendments to this year's budget. So now hearing amendments. We'll start with Councilor Allenson.
Thank you. So I've been considering what I could do as town councillor to restore funding to the Board of Education in this budget. I've always been an advocate for education and our staff at large here in the town of Wallingford. I want everyone to work in safe, pleasant environments without concern for their that their job will become volatile because of changes in the costs which they do not control to employ them. Despite not being a parent, I believe that the quality of education that we give our students in Wallingford and at large will determine the future of this town, the future of government locally and beyond our town lines. Teachers and education staff do not go into public service for the money. While teacher salaries may seem high to some, those salaries were earned through education that was required but not reimbursed. Arguably, teachers see students for more hours during the week than many parents are able due to growing necessities for dual income families. Wallingford Public School staff demonstrates, reinforces and facilitates core values such as hard work, often bringing work home, perseverance, helping a large variety of learning styles to get to the same comprehension levels and kindness. As partners to families in Wallingford, the Wallingford Public School staff works to ensure that our students leave Wallingford Public Schools with the very best of their efforts to create a future that is ever brighter than the present in which we live. As a council, we have responsibility to share the burden that comes with steering the ship that is Wallingford away from the larger encumbrances that will come with continued minimal maintenance of our departments and facilities. We must participate alongside the mayor in the conversation that the public starts when they want improved standards in our parks and buildings. The public regularly comes to us asking for increased service, maintenance and refurbishing, if not complete rebuilding, of parks, buildings, schools and service departments. All of these priorities compete for financing. For years, we have tried to maintain our staffing levels and pay levels despite growing needs in the community at large. The more visibly apparent to most cost of that was more regular rehab and refurbishment of our facilities. Under new administration, these conversations have been acknowledged and have become more collaborative. I am realistic in my expectations. I acknowledge that I will not be able, despite my support for it, to put all of the Board of Ed budget back into place. I do not believe that that option would pass without a veto, and I know we would not have enough support to override that veto. I'm hoping that this proposal will be viewed by the mayor and council as shared responsibility on both our parts to begin moving forward. I make a motion to accept the proposed budget, including ARPA funding, and add 2.3 million back to the Board of Ed's sustained services plan. Additionally, I'm motioning to make the current part-time police accreditation manager a full-time role with an increase of $21,594 and an additional $14,870 for the IT manager for the town, as was negotiated for his hire. This request totals $2,336,464 be added back to the budget and increase the mill rate and revenue lines accordingly. This would bring the tax need to $140,810,441 and a total budget need to $197,417,971.
Second.
All right, motion made in second. Discussion on the motion. Mr. Carvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. I said this a couple of weeks ago and I'll say it again now. I think it is very important that we restore funds to the Board of Education's budget. I think I've heard all of us complain at one time or another about the declining test scores and the condition of our schools. But cutting funds from the Board of Ed is certainly not going to resolve these issues. We have seen an increase in healthcare costs and other contractual obligations. There has been an increase in public and private tuition. The crossing guards have been removed from the police budget and put into the board's budget, and we've seen a decrease in the state's excess cost reimbursement. All of this has created a situation where the Board of Ed needs an additional $3.1 million just to maintain the status quo. Without that, we are looking at approximately 65 positions in the school system being eliminated. This is not the direction our schools should be going in. I want to see our schools succeed and our students succeed, and if we want to see that success happen, our schools should be of top priority to us, and we should support them. And at the very least, we should be supporting a level of funding that maintains the services and staffing that we currently have. We are not going to see an excellent and thriving school system if we don't adequately support and fund their budget. And right now, the proposed funding is inadequate. I would be willing, like Councilor Allenson, to support a full restoration of the sustained services budget. But I know that there are varying opinions. But we need to accomplish restoring some funding. And that amount needs to be significant, and I think $2.3 million is. And I realize it is painful and it is a sacrifice, but if education is truly a priority of ours in Wallingford and we want our schools and students to prosper, we need to put money back in their budget. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Councilor Allenson.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So.
You can go first.
No, please, please, go ahead.
Just to comment, it's a lot of money. We talked about this. I've never participated in anything like this previously. We're on an unsustainable path. I cannot say that this is repeatable next year. And I know it's not the full amount that the Board of Ed designed, any of the levels that they actually threw out there and wanted. I don't know what needs to change from our side besides just having more money available. When I was on the Board of Education, our operations and whatnot, we had to maintain all the buildings and everything. And I don't know if since I left, there was a dynamic change where maybe there wasn't enough funding for a term or two and money shifted towards, well, you know, we'll wait on that so we can pay our people. And now, and I know, and the previous chairwomen of the Board of Ed have said, like, well, we'd prefer the general government take over the building and maintenance. And I was always like, no, when I was on the Board of Ed, I wanted that control. Maybe that's not the way that the board as a whole is now or any longer. And I think that's something to discuss and explore over the next year. As it was pointed out in the past years and in these past meetings, we as a council cannot give the Board of Ed less money in a budget year than they received previously. I think they have to have some sort of increase. I'm not even sure it could be zero. And it's possible to get an exception to that, but I don't believe there's any hypotheticals out there. You have to go and it's a case-by-case, you know, judgment issued down. We may have to really plan some sort of shift, and if that's what we're going to do over the years to siphon away and shift maintenance dollars away from Board of Ed towards general government, it's an operations change. You know, the principal would no longer be able to call just their guy and have something fixed. Then you're basically calling a hierarchy and a structure of bureaucracy over at Town Hall, and that creates a whole different can of worms to open up. And I'm very leery of that, but I'm concerned when, you know, I receive emails, phone calls, messages, or people come to the mic and say, well, you would be embarrassed to walk through the buildings. That's not on our, that hasn't been on our plate. It can be, if it has to be, okay. And I get it on some level that there is, there are emotional decisions made. We're always looking for the welfare, the child, the student that's in front of us, to the teacher, the one that's in the classroom, and that's where it should be. And maybe we just need to have a stronger line of delineation made so that different people are making those decisions on maintenance structures of the buildings versus the actual instructional components. I don't know what the answer is, but what I do know is that this isn't repeatable. And I'm hoping, I'm counting on it, because I know the Board of Ed has some excellent people on it, that we'll be able to figure out some sort of way to use, hopefully this passes the 2.3 million, and make something work to get towards that. I don't understand entirely how we got to where we are versus the other years of being shy, you know, being a little bit shy of sustainable, there being cuts, and then being so grossly away from sustainable. And I think we need to sit together and figure that out. Because as much as the Board of Education is not receiving enough funds to sustain their operations, the town isn't going to either, and we just can't keep raising the taxes relatively. So I do support this as is proposed. I also thank Mayor Servoni for agreeing, recommending or suggesting the increase in the police department line. Anybody following along at home, I was asking questions in the emails, kind of to get to that point, so I'm glad that happened. And buckle up, everybody, I guess.
Thank you, Mr. Laffin. So I do have kids in the district, like Mr. Laffin, I have kids in the district. And I agree with, I would say, pretty much all of what Mr. Laffin said. I have, quality of education is a top priority for me, right? And, you know, free and public education is a commitment that we as Americans make to all of our youth. That's sort of a unique around the world, right? Most countries don't educate all of their kids, but we do. However, if you go to the Ed site website and you start looking and digging into the numbers of the education in Wallingford, there's a lot of numbers in there that we shouldn't be too proud of. And I'm not directing that at the administration or at the Board of Education, because I know they all see the same things that I do. But there was a path that we started before the pandemic of a downhill slide, and we haven't really recovered from it. Many districts that spend less per pupil than we do have recovered. So I have concerns about the path that we're on, and how do we get out of this sort of spiral that we're in? How do we foment change in the district? So part of me says, you know, if this was a private sector, if this was a business, right? If this was my business, I would say we need some kind of reorganization. We have to look at making major changes in the structure of how we are, of our district. You know, I don't have a foot on the Board of Ed, right, so I can't sort of make those decisions. But it seems like we're in need of sort of a dramatic change to kind of right the ship. You know, in the time I've been on here, the eight years I've been on the council, we've had six tax increases, and they were all essentially for the Board of Education. When I hear people say things like, you know, we're starving the Board of Education for general government, it's actually the opposite. Over the past eight years, we've starved general government for the Board of Education. And now you're seeing sort of the fallout from that, you know, some of the buildings the mayor's looking at repairing, some of the issues with the parks. So it's disingenuous to suggest that we've starved Board of Education at all. I think the prior mayor, I think, was very generous with education, all factors considered. And I'm just not seeing the return on my investment as a citizen and a taxpayer. If we had great results and you said this is what it costs to keep everything going the way it is, I would say, okay, then this is what it's going to cost. But we don't have great results. We have mediocre and in some cases, not good results at all. And so I'm not sure how to make change at this point, you know, from where I'm sitting. So I'm not sure if I support such an increase, because I'm not sure if that gets us to where we need to be. I think the taking over the buildings idea is an excellent one. I think education should focus on education. But I think I need to know how we get better as a district, because we're not there now. Anyone else on this topic? Mrs. Tada?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to bring up some points and some data. The Board of Ed has had surpluses the past, it's like five years. So in 1819, the Board of Ed surplus was $478,000. In 1920, it was $2.6 million. In '20 to '21, it was $1.34 million. '21, '22, $34,000. '22, '23, $107,000. And as of right now, in '23, '24 is projected $397, but that year is still ongoing. There's another topic that I think needs to be brought up. The number of certified teachers. And I don't believe this is a budgetary issue. I'm not sure exactly why this happened, if it was through attrition or retirements, but the number of our certified teachers is going down. So in '21 and '22, we had 611. In '22, '23, we had 597, and in '23, '24, 585. The quick math shows that potentially the roughly 2.5% wage increase would be offset by that reduction in certified staff. Just a few other points about the financial aspect. Last year, one of my budget amendments which passed was to give the Board of Ed, to restore some of their funding. We did restore some of that. We had asked for the money to go to certain items. $130,000 was requested to go to the Pond Hill Gymnasium floor, which we were told was unsafe in its current state. $80,000 for the DAG ball field and $80,000 for the DAG floor. That might have been the one that was said to be unsafe. It was one of the two. Those, that money was not spent on those items. Now, we can't tell the Board of Ed how to spend the money. That was our suggestion. We said if we give you this money, this is how we would like it to be spent. None of those were completed, which concerns me especially because one was noted to be a potential trip hazard or safety issue. So when we did give the Board of Ed money for things that they said they needed, it wasn't spent on what we asked them to. Again, that's their purview, but I think we just all need to be aware of that if we are under the assumption that we're going to give this money in order to save positions that may not necessarily be what it goes towards. As Councilor Marone said, you know, the Wallingford schools aren't what they were 20 years ago, and I think that's something we really need to look at. And I don't remember a year, I don't recall, in those 20 years where there wasn't a budget increase. So I just question, is this a money issue or is there something else going on? You know, 20 years ago, Wallingford schools were fantastic and people came to town for that. And I'm not so sure we're still kind of at that same level. I think we need to really focus on that, and I'm not so sure that's a money issue. You know, the conversations that happen behind the scenes, I think, are a lot different than the ones that happen up here, and I think that's unfortunate. You know, I don't want to betray confidence, but I think some of the conversations I've had with Board of Ed members, I think there's, it's very difficult to address some of these topics, and I think it would be better for the town if we did address them. You know, sometimes, some of the money that we, you know, we think is going to go to save teachers is not necessarily spent that way. So, you know, we spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on lawyers annually that encourage the Board of Ed to not answer residents' questions at meetings. You know, I have a problem with that. I don't think that's a good use of our taxpayer money. You know, we spent money on a PR consultant last year with the whole one high school debate. So there are places we can save, and I don't necessarily think that the 67 positions being cut is necessarily where we need to hit. So basically, just in conclusion, I'm not convinced that, you know, that the mayor did give an increase. It's a pretty drastic increase. It's not a cut, it's an increase. It's not what the board requested. So I think to keep this town affordable, I mean, it's already a steep increase. And we know over my time here, every year I've proposed a flat tax or a tax reduction. Several of those have passed. This year, I'm not doing that, and it's not for lack of looking and trying. I spent hours poring over the budget. But I think in Mayor Servoni's first term, I wanted to give him a chance to say that these are the priorities of our town. This is what we can afford. Let's give it a year and see how that turns out. I think with this increase, the taxes will be wholly unaffordable. Wallingford's a blue collar town. I'm proud of that. I just, I think that we're pricing people out of Wallingford at this point, and I think we really need to look at where we can save, and it's difficult. You know, if layoffs were to occur, I think the status part for me is that it's probably going to be the bulk of the teachers that are making six figures and not our newest, youngest teachers, which I think is heartbreaking. You know, we have union negotiations with the teachers, and it's fine if we want to pay them great salaries, and if the bulk of our teachers are making six figures, that's fine. But it's maybe not sustainable to also assume that you're going to have the same amount of teachers. And the sad thing is that it's those new teachers, it's those teachers that are right out of college that are making the lowest, that have the least seniority, that may be affected, and that's, I think that's really difficult. But I just, I even think the mayor's budget as it stands, I think, is a big hit for people. I think adding this to it is just wholly unaffordable. I do have one question, though. Where did the 2.3 million figure come from? Was that just a, like a compromise number? Was that a calculation based on something? I guess that's for Councilor Allenson.
That was what I spoke to others about and what they'd be comfortable with if it were overridden and we had to veto.
Okay, thank you.
It's also a more acceptable number because I knew there was no way 3.9 was coming through. So I went, I thought a little bit more than half. Restoration is better than going for the whole thing and failing completely.
Okay, thank you. This is the first I'm hearing of this number, so I need to, you know, obviously thinking about it. But like I said, I just, I have major concerns about the affordability for the taxpayers. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Testa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know I don't normally say much, but I'm going to say a little bit extra tonight. This is, yeah, this is, well, there's probably no more important issue for us to be discussing, given our responsibilities, than what we're talking about right now. Not specifically the dollars, but the concept, the issue. And so I've got a few things I want to say. And a little background, I think, would help to understand my perspective. As you all probably know, I work in this system as an instructor in the Culinary Arts Program at Lyman Hall. I've been there almost 10 years. I'm one of the newer teachers. I'm nowhere near the high step. Anyway, and from the looks of me, I'm not getting there. But aside from that, I spent eight years on the Board of Ed in the '90s. It was a time when we had a lot of turnover. There was a lot of flux. There was some controversy, but that's not even relevant. But I'm going to get to a point later that this is important to note. There was, I went to Sheehan High School and graduated in '77. Sheehan was open to '73. Every student, every teacher at Sheehan was basically new. They were all five years older than us. I'm exaggerating, but you get the picture. We brought in a whole crew of new educators to staff Sheehan High School, and that was 1973. So when we got to the '90s, when I joined the Board of Ed, it was a lot of people who were nearing retirement. It was a cohort of instructors, of teachers. Lyman Hall was always staffed with experienced, amazing people. So there was an overlap as well. But '90s rolled around, and it was a time for some turnover, which impacted the budget. And now we're where we are now, and it may be a similar time. We talk about, we've seen the numbers. I don't have them off the top of my head, but a lot. A very large percentage of our teachers are at the highest step. Their annual increase is not that great because of the way the increase works out, but that's where the money is. Keep that in mind. So you just go 1%, 2% on 220 people making 120 grand plus 50 or 40 in benefits. And a $2 to $3 million salary line increase is math. It's math. And then you could say, well, how do we cut that? You can't bemoan the fact that if you try to cut staff, you unfortunately, you can't say unfortunately, we can't cut the people at the top. That's not how life works. That's not how seniority works. That's not how professionalism works. We do lament the fact that if we have to lay off, we're potentially laying off the younger teachers we fought to bring in and who are the future of the system. So let's keep that in mind. And I spent eight years on the Board of Ed dealing with all this and quite a few years on the council. And now I'm in the system, so I see a lot of that. Given that experience, sometimes I hear things up here that I'm a little uncomfortable with, because they reflect, I'm sorry, they reflect a clear misunderstanding of how things go, how things work. I had a conversation this morning with two colleagues, and they just said, hey, what's going on with the budget, you know? And I, and no one can ever accuse me of not being able to separate my job here from my position on the board. And they just wanted to know what was going on. We talked about it for a while, and it was just interesting to share. And being in the system, yeah, I see things that I might think to myself, oh, oh, I could save us money. You know, I see where there's this, I see where there's that. And I'm there, and I have more experience than anybody even close to this. But that's not my job. It's not my role to think that I could see somewhere in the system where we could cut money because I might think that it's superfluous or whatever. That's not my job. Then I hear people say, this gets me. Oh, 20 years ago, we were this, now we're not this. No, don't, don't do that. Don't go there with me, all right? I was here that whole time, I'm here now. If you say that, you don't understand the realities of the system we now operate. You don't understand the demographics of our community. You don't understand who is in our system. You don't understand what we're doing. And we're doing a damn good job of educating the students we have. And if you look at test scores and say, we're not doing what we did 20 years ago, yeah, well, I'm trying not to get too particular, but there are different cohorts of students in our system that are taking these tests that were not designed for them, and we have programs in place to make everybody do the best they can. And it doesn't always reflect in a test score because our demographics are not Cheshire's, they're not Southingtons. Wallingford is a unique community. We can spend time celebrating so much about our community, but when we realize that sometimes that community poses challenges to how we perform on standardized tests, we don't draw those conclusions. We're not willing to look at that. So respectfully back off on that. I have something that I just have to bring up. So I talked about 20 years ago and beyond that, and I'm sorry I didn't bring this up when we had the board before us, because I looked at where we are and I said, we have to do something. This is what my conversation with my colleagues was about. And whatever we do this year is only this year. It's going to be worse next year. Why? Because of the who we have in our system. So what I'm hoping we can do with the board moving forward after the budget's over is to talk seriously about considering another large potential early retirement incentive program that, when I first got on the board, Joe Cirasolo implemented, with that cohort from the 70s. And every teacher that makes 120,000 plus 50 and 40 or 50 in benefits, who is able to retire and then is replaced by somebody making 50 or 60, saves us $50,000 right away. And 100 of them, don't make me do the math, 100 of them is a lot of money, okay? And, but to do that, it costs money. To do that, you need to pay, you can't just say, oh, I want you to retire early. No, you have to, you have to put in the money that allows people that are not quite there to get to where they need to be to be able to retire at the level they wanted to. Maybe it's 50,000 a person, maybe it's 100, I don't know. But there comes a time where we need to talk about this because if we can reduce the salary line by 3, 4, 5 million dollars, and it costs us a million or two to do it, that's an investment that we need to consider. Because next year, the same thing is going to happen. The sustained budget is going to go up 3.8%. And if we don't do something to address that, we will always be having these arguments. And nobody up here is in favor of, you know, we're all in favor of good education, so come on. It's nothing to do with anything else. So I had to throw that out there. And I only do that because I want you to know that there, this is something we can all work on. So that if we do something this year to get us where we need to be, there is a plan potentially to ease the continued increases, and it won't be every year. Maybe we have to take a little bit of a bite this year. Maybe we have to, you know, raise the taxes a little bit more than we wanted to, to maintain the system we have. But we can do things to reduce the overall expenses of the system in conjunction with our board colleagues that will show some forward thinking. That's the only reason I threw that out there. This year, yeah, I don't know. Yeah, anecdotal critiques sound great, 100,000 here, 100,000 here. That's not, that's not really meaningful. They're negligible impacts, we need big effects, and this is one where we can do that. This year, you know, I'm not speaking because I feel myself threatened. I'm in a position where I imagine I'm pretty secure. This is not about me. This is about having to make decisions that will primarily affect our elementary schools, where it all begins. You're not going to lay off a lot of teachers at the other levels. You might hit the middle school a bit, maybe you knock off a couple of high school teachers. We teach electives. So, you know, we have to consider that drastic cuts that the board has to absorb will be very difficult. At the same time, I answer to the taxpayer as I always have. I can't imagine going to someone and saying, we're going to, you know, we need to put all that money back, including the strategic money, and raise your taxes by $360 as opposed to 200. I could. I'm actually going to say it. We could afford it. But not everybody can. And I understand that. Not everybody can. We can't tap into one-time expenses to, you know, to offset operational expenses. So what I'm, what I'm saying is that I'm making a decision tonight with the intention of moving forward with a very meaningful discussion with the board about doing something that I think, I think a lot of teachers would really like, and everybody would like, and it worked great 20 years ago. And I think it could work very well next year and the year after. We could save 3, 4, 5 million dollars legitimately in our budget line, in our salary line, with a very creative, well-thought-out, well-prepared, early-retirement program. But we can't do it today. So I'm going to, I'm supporting this motion. I wish it could be more, but I do believe that it's enough at the moment, and I've said more than enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I, too, would have preferred to restore as much money as we could. I think, after going through the budget for the first time, I feel like part of the issue, and maybe this is reflected in some people's comments, whether they're aware of it or not, is because I feel personally like we don't pay for what we're supposed to pay for. Like, this whole budget has money that's not coming from taxpayers that next year we're not going to have. So we can talk about finding retirement money or what have you, but we're in the hole, I don't know, $10 million before we even sneeze next year. In terms of the school budget and test scores and 20 years ago, you know, there's a lot of things that we could do when we compare ourselves to other towns. There's a lot of things we could do, and we talk about whether or not we should put the buildings on the municipal side or let the schools deal with it, but the underlying factor in all of it is that we really haven't done anything in the schools in 20 years, aside from the renovation that was done a while back, but that didn't really do anything. So if we're looking for consistencies, it's basically that we don't do what we're supposed to do over time. And so now, when we run into issues where we're contractually obligated to pay people, so we, in good faith, we negotiate with people and we sign contracts and we agree with unions, and we say, this is what we're going to do, and then we turn around and we go, well, you know, we can't do it. That's on us. That's not negotiating in good faith. And if it's the sins of our fathers or the sins of our grandfathers or the sins of whoever from whatever when, we're still paying for it now, and it matters. And so I would love to put all the money in, and I recognize that that's not popular. But, you know, in addition to having a discussion about how we can lower costs, I, we have to start really focusing on what do things cost? Because I don't think we live in a world where we're actually accounting for what things actually cost. We just tell people what we want them to cost. And this seems to be the only room in town where you can do that. Like, everybody else in their regular jobs, it's like, you know, there is no, like, I can't go to Dunkin' Donuts and be like, no, mm-mm, you can take 50 cents off of it. It's not how it works because there's a sign, and that's how much it paid, that's what you pay it. And when you sign contracts with people and unions and other things, you are agreeing to that. And so for us to then say, hey, sorry, we can't do it, well, we knew this was going to happen last year, and apparently we know it's going to happen next year. So I'm not comfortable with really any of this. I support the motion, but I'm disappointed in a lot of how this all sort of plays out, and I'm, you know, I would prefer to be unpopular and have to raise taxes to the point where we pay for what things cost, and then I can, you know, maybe not get elected next time around. But at least at that point, I know that we're paying for what we're supposed to be paying for. Like, I just, I don't understand the whole thing. And so 2.3 versus 3.9, well, that's, the 2.3 was a bargain to try to get to the 80% that we were trying to get, if you're wondering, Council Tada, we were trying to get to the 80% that would at least cover staff and insurance costs and get to that point. So at least when you're talking about people, everybody gets to keep their job. So that's the 2.3 plus what was already allocated is sort of where that all kind of came from. Anyway, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Regan?
Thank you, Chairman Morone. I just want to remind everybody that what we're facing at the current time are, as a result of state cuts, that all the municipalities in this state now have a responsibility to bear. We are not alone. Southington, Cheshire, North Haven, Meriden, the list goes on, as to who has seen drastic cuts in their reimbursements from the state. I am in complete support of Councilwoman Allenson's motion because I feel it's an acceptable compromise between the mayor's budget and the council. We are in a situation, as Council Reynolds just mentioned, where we've already approved and negotiated union contracts bringing an annual increase of 3.7% that affects 80% of the personnel budget. Those are increases mandated by this new contract. We have the responsibility as a council to keep the mill rate down. Paying at or below 32 with a $2.3 million increase is enough to continue to invest in our children as well as provide the services we have all come to expect from town government. Test scores have been affected by COVID. Surpluses were due mostly to the transportation savings during COVID. We are now at a new normal, a new baseline. We need to give the mayor, the Board of Education, the tools to service our community. With this motion, we should avoid the bulk of the suggested personnel cuts and allow us to collectively work together to right this ship. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the council? Members of the public? All right, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Armendee?
Yes.
Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tada?
No.
Testa?
Yes.
Morone?
I vote no, but the motion passes. Do we have any other motions on the budget? Council Tada?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, Mr. Senna, this is a question for you. We, so we talk often with the taxes and the mill rate about the average house in Wallingford and how much it would cost, the average house. Do you have that number for the median house? If not, it's okay. I should have asked you beforehand, I'm sorry.
I don't have that number, sorry.
Okay, that's fine. I think maybe for next week, we could, I would just like to compare the numbers for what this means for the, what this increase means for the median household and the average household. I just think that would be helpful before we have our final vote on Tuesday. You know, first of all, I was going to say, I do take some umbrage at the fact that, you know, the insinuation that I don't have knowledge on this topic. I was the controller of a company that did 20 to 33 million dollars in sales for 16 years annually in sales. So this is, in fact, right in my wheelhouse. So just want to state that, just so everybody knows where my background is with budgets. This just came to mind. Like I said, I didn't know this number was coming, I didn't know this motion was coming, but I'm looking now, I'm kind of feverishly looking for how we can fund this because, like I said, I don't think it's affordable, and the motion did pass. So, Mr. Senna, I have a question for you. We, several years ago, I believe it was three or four years ago in our budget, I believe it was Mr. Testa who proposed that we put a million dollars aside for a pool fund. That money, to my knowledge, or the bulk of that money, has not been expended. Do we have an amount of what is left in that fund?
The whole million dollars, because you never appropriated the million dollars to be spent. You just sent the money to another fund that's been sitting there since.
Okay, I thought possibly this year, when we had, we're thinking about going up for bid, or maybe last year, that there was, some of that was spent on specs, maybe. It wasn't that money.
Not that money because that, when that, the pool fund bond appropriations around 600,000.
Okay.
The original. So anything that's still related to that could still go against that money that was appropriated.
Okay. So basically, you know, about three or four years ago, we took taxpayer money, we set a million dollars aside in hopes that we were going to do the pool project. That hasn't happened. What we've been talking about now is that if we do do the pool project, that'll be bonded. So to offset this, I think it's only fair that we use the taxpayers' money to offset a tax increase. So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we use the $1 million that is sitting in the pool fund towards this year's budget, allocate that towards revenues in order to reduce the Board of Ed expenditure, in theory, to 1.3 million instead of the 2.3. That's a little bit of a sloppy motion, but basically, I'm proposing that we use the $1 million of the pool money as revenues for this budget.
Okay, is there a second motion? All right, seeing no second, motion fails. Any other motions on the budget? Okay, seeing no other motions, then this, Mr. Senna?
Can I just have the final, when you do, when you do the motion? All right, because I didn't get the final total, so if you can email me that, we're great. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. So seeing no other business, this meeting is adjourned. Okay, perfect. So seeing no other business, this meeting is adjourned.